Okay, good evening, everyone. We're gonna call the work session of November 3rd to order. We're gonna stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Sabozli?
Okay. Mr. President, if it's all right with you, we're just gonna sort of jump off our normal schedule here. And Mike Whitico, our Director of Finance, is here tonight to do his annual presentation of the budget, the 2026 budget. As you know, we had an update at the last council meeting. Budget season for staff started in the end of August. I mean, for Mike, it's a year-round thing. We had meetings with department heads and with the finance director. So Mike's here to present tonight, and I think he's gonna have some good news for us.
Thank you, Dave. All of you should have this in your basket out there today. That's our 2026 proposed budget. It's my privilege to present for your consideration the proposed 2026 budget. The budget is your financial plan of all municipal funds and represents the borough's priorities, policies, and goals. The budget document allows the council to determine the capital projects that will be funded, the level of service to be provided, and the types of programs that will be delivered to our residents. Thanks to the Finance Committee, the Borough Manager and staff for all their time and efforts towards the creation of this proposed budget. The entire proposed budget for all funds total 27.21 million, and this represents $669,000 more than last year, or a 2.5% increase over last year's adopted budget. Overall, the operating budget funds expenditures required for daily operations related to delivery of services, public safety, clean personnel, facility, infrastructure maintenance, utility, insurance, and other costs. Major assumptions in the 2026 operating budget: tax mileage remains the same at 6.63 mils, last increased in 2024. The last time Allegheny County had a property reassessment was 2013. Will be 13 years looking into 2026. Healthcare costs across the board will be increasing on an average of 11.5%. Insurance costs up 3.5%. Workers' compensation 4.5%, and we're budgeting for no increase in the cost per fuel per gallon, but we are budgeting for more fuel next year. We are creating a new position in the Community Development Department, code enforcement personnel, planning on four retirements, two in a police department, and two in public works. We're also proposing a transfer of $630,000 from the general fund to the capital improvement fund. One project is worth $530,000. Lynn and Drive Kellywood, that's gonna be funded with the old ARPA dollars that were received a few years ago. That's the American Rescue Plan funds, that's $530,000. Also, $100,000 is proposed to be moved. Both of these will be moved before the end of 2025, coming out of prior year's fund balance in the general fund for library/community center improvements. Quick overview of the general fund: total revenues 17.6 million, expenditures 17.79 million, or a deficit of $180,000. Approximately 82% of our revenues are generated from three sources: real estate taxes, income taxes, and sanitation fees. Approximately 72% of our expenditures come from three departments: public safety, our police department, public works, and sanitation collection. Again, total budget of revenues for the general fund, 17.6 million, increase of approximately 2% or $338,000 over the 2025 budget. Total real estate tax revenues are budgeted at a little under $6.5 million. Local enabling taxes, which are the transfer tax, earned income tax, and local security tax are budgeted $5.8 million. Cable TV franchise fees, $496,000. This fee has been declining since 2021. It's a trend that we budgeted for, and basically, people are streaming more than using cable television as in the past. Intergovernmental revenues, budgeted at $1.8 million. State pension funds, $666,000. Our Rad Dollars, which is the extra 1% that we pay for sales tax for living in Allegheny County, $840,000. Contracted snow removal, $109,000. Sanitation collection revenues, $2.44 million. We're not proposing increase during 2026 for our residents. Total expenditures in the general fund, 17.79 million, increase of about $1 million or 6.1%. Administration Department increased by about $61,000 to a total budget of $1.9 million. Approximately $1.26 million is employee-related. We're also budgeting for a consultant to assist us with updating the personnel policy for borough staff, which hasn't been updated for probably over a dozen years, if not more. Borough building department increased by by $40,000 or 5.9%. Budgeted for insurance increased by 3.5%. We're also budgeting for an increase for this maintenance facility, sorry, yes, the maintenance of this facility here, increasing by $19,000, and most of it is associated with the HVA system here and the yearly maintenance. Our largest department by far is the public safety, represents about 39% of the general fund budget. The budget for that department is 6.99 million, increase of 8.8% or approximately $569,000. As mentioned earlier, we're planning for two retirements. We also plan on hiring four new officers, two to replace the retirements and two to replace current open positions due to resignations. Police general wages are going up by approximately $289,000. We do have contractual increases of 3.5%. And also, officers are progressing through the percentage scale upwards to 100%. Retiree healthcare costs for our police department are going up by about $40,000. That's due mainly to the retirements that we're planning for in 2026. The required uniform pension contributions, according to the actuary, you guys have approved it earlier this year, little over $1 million, which is about $37,000 hired in 2025. Community development department increased by about 13.5% or $109,000, $85,000 of which is due to is employee-related. As I mentioned earlier, they are creating a new position next year. Sanitation costs, which is the collection for our residents, budgeted increase of 3.3% or $81,000. That contracted rate will be going up mid-year, I do think it's the month of June of 2026. And we have a very favorable contract next year. Public Works Administration, total budgeted expenses decreased by $119,000. That's due to the fact that we transferred an employee from Public Works Administration to the pure administration department, so it's mainly personnel-related. Public Works Department, which is part of our labor force, increased by $53,000, and most of it is pertaining, it's all personnel-related. Winter maintenance products going up by $182,000 next year. That's due to budgeting more than 2,000 extra tons of salt. Price per ton went up 4.9%, and we're budgeting $309,000 for winter maintenance. Public Works Maintenance increased by $63,000. Approximately $38,000 is due to the increase in amount of diesel fuel that we're gonna be using next year. Again, the price of diesel fuel based on futures will not be going up next year. Recreation Department, which includes maintenance of our Borough Park, actually decreased by $48,000. It's simply due to how we're allocating our public work staff to different departments and different funds throughout the year. Community Support, increasing both the community center and the library by $5,000 each next year. Community Center will receive $102,000. Library will receive a little over $130,000. We're also budgeting for approximately $61,000 for community activities. That would include winter fests, summer fests, light-up nights, and things like that. As mentioned earlier, I'm proposing a transfer of $530,000 from the general fund for capital improvement for Lynn and Kellywood, and also $100,000 from the general fund for improvements to the library and community center. So that will be part of the approval of the adopted budget, and there's a need to transfer those funds prior to the end of the calendar year. Quickly going over the other funds: fire funds, revenues about $853,000. Real estate taxes make up $671,000 of that. I increased the allocation of real estate taxes to the fire fund by approximately $77,000 next year. We also receive about $160,000 from the state for fire insurance proceeds. These dollars are required to be flipped back over and shared equally to all of our voluntary fire departments. We're also budgeting for $150,000 for daylight coverage at our fire departments. Total expenditures are $1,032,000 next year. We're also contributing equally to all of the fire departments about $216,000 as a whole. Street Improvement, revenues $522,000, of which $507,000 comes from real estate taxes. That's the main revenue source. Expenditures, $675,000, $50,000 of which is for road construction. We do allocate a lot of our public work staff to this fund, approximately $422,000. And there was a stormwater project that we earmarked for $100,000 to be allocated next year. We're also tapping in the fund balance for this fund, little over $153,000. This street improvement fund is in pretty good shape, so I'd recommend doing that. Flood mitigation, revenues a little over $1.54 million. Expenditures, almost $2 million. We also allocate public work staff for stormwater projects throughout the year, little over $800,000. Materials and supplies to perform stormwater projects that we directly buy and use, a little over $315,000. And we're also budgeting for a pretty large project next year that will be contracted out, Timothy and Tahoe, $600,000. We also will be tapping into fund balance, little over $430,000. This fund here is pretty healthy, so we've been storing away some fund balance for large projects, and 2026, we are budgeting for one. EMS Fund typically allocated by a little over half a million dollars, coming directly from real estate taxes. Of that dollar amount, $445,000 goes directly to EMS in the yearly stipend, typically released during the months of October, November. That's when we pretty much received all of our current year real estate taxes. Debt Service Fund, that is what it is. It's our general obligation debt bond requirements, almost $2.1 million in revenues, of which a little over $2 million comes directly from real estate taxes. The other portion is interest earnings. Expenditures, $2,430,000, all pertaining to principal and interests associated with our bonds. Capital Improvement Fund, revenue is a little shy of $1.8 million, of which $775,000 is coming from real estate taxes and $970,000 coming from potential grants or grants that we already have in hand. This fund, we're receiving, as I mentioned twice already, $630,000 prior to year-end from the general fund fund balance. Expenditures are about $1.4 million. Existing capital lease purchase agreements, a half a million dollars. That's for capital purchases that we made, and still have lease payments due on them. New capital lease loan agreements, a little shy of $200,000. Gonna be buying an administrative staff vehicle, four police vehicles. Gonna be replacing the MTDs, which are the mobile data terminals in all of our police vehicles. Three public works vehicles, used bucket truck, and a vent rack mower. Gonna be doing some outright purchases, buying three more intersection security cameras, a drone for the police department, cameras for Plum's concrete park, community center FOB system, and a Bobcat sweeper attachment. Some of the larger projects now, as I mentioned, Lynn and Kellywood, $530,000. Library Community Center Improvement, $100,000. Logan Ferry Heights Playground, $287,000. That's potentially a new grant along with the following two projects: Holiday Park Phase 4, $575,000, and Holiday Park Phase 4.5, $260,000. The last three-year pending receipt of grants next year. Liquor Fuels Funds, budgeting for $777,000 worth of revenues. Total expenditures, we'll be tapping into some fund balance here, $950,000, all of which will be going to next year's annual paving program. All in all, I think council should be happy with the budget. No new taxes, no fuel increases. We are using some fund balance, but it's a very solid budget that I think you should consider adopting next month. Again, thanks to staff, they put a lot of time in this year, the Finance Committee, and also our Borough Manager. You're welcome.
I've got a question for you, Mike.
Yes?
With the fire fund, you're looking at the year-end fund balance of $93,000?
Yes.
Should we look into maybe changing the deductions or what we're putting into it?
Actually, this year, as I mentioned, I did allocate additional funds to the fire fund to ensure that I carried over about $100,000 going in into next year. Possibly down the road, we may have to look at how much we're spending on the fire departments, and possibly, we need to allocate more funds looking into the future.
What's it like, a quarter mil?
Not exactly. In years past, we've been trying to give them about $3.25 million every year. That wouldn't, that's probably about a half a mil, maybe. But it's been at that dollar amount for quite a while now. Costs, yes, have gone up. There will be in 2027 and '28, I think it is, both fire truck apparatus loans will be falling off, so they'll be totally paid off, which will help. But we are, we did create a new line next year for the daylight coverage, $150,000, so that does have some bottom line impact.
Because we're not buying a new apparatus anymore, so we're getting hit a lot more with repairs.
Repairs, yes. They were well over budget this year. It's not just repairs, it's just the normal preventative maintenance that council has agreed to pay at 100% of the cost. They need regular maintenance, and it's not cheap. And we've also agreed to pay for 50% of the repair. So 2025 hit the budget pretty hard.
So I think every month now, we're seeing, under public safety, these motions to approve the maintenance as well as the repairs. And Mike, in order to keep that fund solvent, you said about $100,000 extra into that fund?
About 75, issue.
So we're definitely putting more money into that fund to make sure that we have the money to pay for those things.
It may be time to look at changing the mileage rate we're putting into it.
I did increase slightly this year. I do move some of the percentages around every year, but very slightly. As mentioned, I've been putting in about $3.25 million that was agreed upon a month years ago, but I couldn't do that this year to keep it solvent.
Keep, I mean, I don't need to tell you, but keep an eye on that. We might have to revisit that halfway through the year.
Will do.
If we get hit with a bunch more of maintenance issues.
So I'm hoping in December that we have an agenda item. I've been working with staff on this. You had asked us to look at a revised policy for the fire fund, so we're about 90% of the way through that.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that we get that in front of council next month.
Mike, one question too. If any of us were asked, what would be a safe number to tell the average citizen our surplus going into next year?
When we, or when I discussed increasing taxes in 2024, they were material increase. I projected at that time that we would make it out at least five years plus. It's gonna be five years plus, a few more years. I wouldn't go out quite that far right now, but the general fund is in pretty good shape due to revenues coming in since 2024, 2025. Vacancies, for example, we had two police officers pretty much off all year. That's a big savings. Next year, we're gonna have one person off military for a year. We had a police officer off military for a year. We can't budget for that. We just assume they're always gonna be here, so those are some good personnel savings, and it does help the bottom line, and it pushes it out. So I think you're in very good shape.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Paul, to go along with that, item number 16 on the agenda, we need to authorize, our council needs to authorize the advertisement of this budget as required by law, so that it can be adopted at council's December meeting. So as an agenda item, I'd ask that council authorize the budget advertisement.
Okay. Everybody in agreement to put it on the agenda? Any discussion? Okay, agenda item.
Very good. All right, we're gonna head back to the top of our agenda, the planning and economic development. Tonight, Sam Prokopik is here. Sam doesn't normally come to these meetings, maybe once a year, twice a year? Sam's our Director of Community Development, and Sam is here to walk us through a number of these items. We have seven items. And Sam, if we can start with items two, three, and four, they're all grouped together with the Old World Industries project. I understand we have some gentlemen here tonight representing Old World Industries. So Sam, I'll turn it over to you and hope that we have some sort of presentation on this project.
Yeah, so, you know, I'll invite Erica and whoever else would like to present. If you wanna come up, kind of introduce yourself, introduce the project where you're located just to give council an idea of what they're hearing here tonight.
Yeah, no problem. My name's Ted Jacobson. I'm the Senior Director of Operations for Old World Industries. I'm housed in Northbrook, which is about 15 minutes north of O'Hare in Illinois. We purchased the facility at 100 Logan's Ferry Road in March of 2023, but we've been doing business here since 1984. Our plan is to propose in front of you guys tonight a pretty substantial expansion of that facility, roughly $30 million expansion, creating 40 new jobs. Our goal is to complete that expansion hopefully by end of next year. But the presentation goes through a couple of different steps, where we are with comments with Sam and his group today, and we have the engineers and Novak, our consultant for the construction side, to answer any questions you guys have around those, and also talk through kind of, I think there's landscape in the presentation as well, what the facility would potentially look like at the end of the project. So again, thank you for hearing our project tonight. And with that, that's a couple of different slides there. The first slide that he skipped over, I mean, that's the, that would be coming from, what, south side? North side, going to the south side. That's all the additional landscape that Palm Borough was asking for at that facility today that does not exist. It's a new parking lot, the two structures that are by Logan's Ferry exist today, and then the buildings that are in blue on that side there and on the back, which you can't see, are the expansion. So basically, what we're trying to do is connect the entire facility. Today, we produce on the south side and load it on a truck, and then have to move it across the parking lot to our existing buildings, so we're trying to connect the entire structure to make it more efficient.
What are the items that you produce down there?
We produce, antifreeze is the only thing we produce today. With the expansion, we will be bringing on the production of windshield wash, which does require some additional chemicals to be housed on site. And we're going through the necessary permitting process to, with the PADEP and everybody else to handle those chemicals. We're well versed in manufacturing those products. We do it in other parts of the country today.
And the product comes in via rail freight or on?
Primarily rail, or we are piping into, receiving it in via Bard as well. One of the products via Bard. And we receive Bard as the vessel I call today. And that would be coming down Logan's Ferry from Oakmont. That's the water tank and pump house that you guys, that is being required for the project, and then the front side of the property, the way it exists today.
Can you touch upon, for council's sake, why the water tank and pump house is required?
Yeah, so we did a test with Palm Borough, coming out of the, a water test, a water flow test, and we have to meet minimum requirements, which it did not meet when we ran the test. It actually blew out part of your system going back quite a distance, so it was determined that we needed that for some fire protection for, was it two?
Additional flow.
Additional flow for fire protection up to two hours on the entire facility.
It's also a piece of fire hives that we added additional on property.
Correct. So these are tests that you're conducting with the municipal authority?
They've already been done. And then that's the backside of the property. And this is, I mean, this is an overall picture of what it would look like. The two purple buildings are plum buildings, what it'll look like when it's, those are the expansion buildings are being added, and then the additional parking lot that's on the top left-hand side on the east side of the tracks for the additional employees. And then the trees are the hets that are being asked for your guys' coat.
So what council here tonight as well is that you guys have requested a waiver to the landscaping requirements. So naturally, this site is existing. There is existing healthy, mature vegetation, so to plant or cut down existing mature trees to plant new trees to grow back, you know, within 40 years to meet the same size and height doesn't really make sense. So there is language within the Souda that does allow for a waiver to be had and approved by your board to allow them to do that. Now, what this rendering does represent are additional plantings and trees that they are going to be planting to meet the stormwater requirements for their BMPs, which are best management practices. So if you see, we'll call it the north of this diagram, there's a stormwater basin that's proposed, and there are plantings, trees, and shrubbery that is required, along with some buffer yard requirements, even though they already meet and exceed actually the planting requirements for the buffer yard along the rear. This project also does have an infiltration chamber for stormwater here in the parking lot, so they do have a good bit of stormwater control. You know, there isn't any downstream homes that could potentially be impacted. All their stormwater currently is discharged into the river, and it's going to be actually collected and improved, because I don't believe that there really is any retention on the site currently. So this is going to be improving water quality and slowing the control rate of discharge off the site. Along with, we're coming out of septic, and we're going to a sanitary time. Yeah, so that will be one of the other items that we can touch upon here, too.
Just a quick question, Sam. I see that the first item for Old World on the agenda is the landscape waiver that you talked about. Did Planning Commission weigh in on that?
They did. They did provide a positive recommendation to council to approve the landscaping waiver.
Thank you.
Sam, is this down by where the old gunpowder place used to be, or is this up by the old Penn Glen?
This is the former Penn Glen.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, the facility's been there since the 1950s. It was formerly known as Penn Glen, owned by the Steimer family.
I believe it was, I've heard Penn Glen, that's how I always refer to it, but also...
Industrial Terminal Systems.
Yes, industrial.
It was Penn Glen, and then it was changed to Industrial Terminal Systems.
And you said?
All owned by the Steimer family from existence.
And as Eric was mentioning, there's a current septic system that I believe is, if not failed, it's soon to be potentially needing some repair? Basically, probably doesn't really function as a septic system because it's been compacted over time, and it can't be reused, so that's why we're doing a tie-in at Logan's Ferry. So as he's mentioning, they are proposing a private lateral essentially heading towards New Kensington, to the point where they will then transition under Logan's Ferry Road, take you via a Penn dot HOP, and then to tie in, and that will then become a public system extension essentially, owned and operated by PB May to tie into their system. And then right before it crosses under Pucketa Creek, that's really the border of Plum and New Kensington, and then that will flow into the New Kensington Treatment Facility. So there is some involvement with New Kensington's Water Authority, yeah.
And they've already signed off on it.
Correct, yep. So the resolution that you hear tonight is for their component for the sewage facility planning module. Out of good practice, we do pass these resolutions for any and all sewage modules, just to, you know, cover our butts.
Any other questions?
Sam, so on the sewage facilities planning module, have they applied for any sort of to do just the? to do just the postcard, or you definitely need a full-blown planning module for this?
I am under the impression that yes, it is, since it's a public main extension, that the full module is to be had. Doug Evans with NIRA has been working with Eric and Thad here. I've not received an approval letter from DEP just yet, but I'd imagine as soon as you receive that, they are usually pretty good at CCing us and providing us that document when it is had.
We're moving forward. They went in as a general, submission to the NPDES, and they moved us up to an individual plan.
Yeah, you're referring to stormwater discharge. That was, we were talking sewage.
Is that where the sewage, where they're talking about tying it in down by Columbia Road?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a vacant track of land there. So I think they're working with the private property owner.
Yes, we are. So Sam, under land development, I would imagine that most of those outstanding items are third-party approvals?
Yes. Yeah, you know, obviously not limited to. There's some workings with the railroad company for easements. Well, they don't quite grant easements, but yet.
Licenses, and we have them all already.
Yeah. NPDES, which they're working through the DEP Sewage Module. The Penn dot HOP, again, these are all third-party items. And then the typical condition of addressing all of the comments from KU Resources letter dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, to which their engineers have responded. It was sometime last week. So KU is undergoing their review, and I expect that we should have that back within the next couple of days, next week. It is, it is a pretty extensive project, so it's gonna take a little bit of time for.
One more question for you.
Yep.
So I've heard tonight that there's gonna be an extension of the sanitary line or the water line. Is some of that being dedicated to the authority? And if that's so, does the authority, are they anticipating a development agreement with them?
Yes. Yeah, I believe just a development agreement for the sewer connection, and Charlie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the water coming into the pump house in the storage tank, because that's private, once it hits that pump house and beyond, it's not PBMA's responsibility or their line. So I don't believe that they're requiring any development agreement for water, but just strictly the sewer extension.
Yeah, that's correct. There'll be a master meter. There's already an existing meter, but at that point, it does become private. And yeah, so you're correct.
Okay, any further questions? So we're looking at number two, number three, and number four on our agenda sheet to make them. Anybody have any more questions? Okay, there'll be agenda items.
Thank you.
Two, three, and four. Thank you, guys.
All right, Sam, while we have you here, I'm gonna put you to work on the rest of these. So item number one is the chair lot line revision. I know we talked about this last month. We had accepted it as complete. How has this progressed?
We have received a consistency letter from KU Resources stating that the surveying consultant have, has, sorry, addressed all of their comments. So at this point in time, we can receive the plan, sign and approve it, stamp it, and allow for the applicant to record it.
Very good. So that's as recommended by the borough engineer?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so number one, the lot line revision. Any questions or discussion? Okay, will make an agenda item also?
All right, so we'll drop down to number five now, under Planning and Economic Development. Sam, this is another sewage facility planning module for the Mendel subdivision. Can you just tell us what the Mendel subdivision is?
Yeah, sure. So many years ago, council, I believe, approved a condition, approval, condition, conditional approval to a plan for a major subdivision along Plum Creek Cemetery, by Skip, your house, actually. There's a track of land, a very large track of land, that they wanted to cut that into five lots. So four buildable lots and then one remnant track in the rear that would remain pretty large. Those conditions, I believe, were never finalized and never met. A new property owner has entered into the picture and would like to subdivide the property into three buildable lots and leave the remaining track in the rear for potential future development. But mainly, what they'd like to do is build three homes today. So that plan has been accepted by Planning Commission so far. And then at the November meeting, they'll actually discuss and provide a recommendation to your board here. However, in the interim, they do need to come back and submit for their sewer planning module for the connection to the public system. That line runs through the creek bed just off New Texas Road there. So they're proposing a small amount of EDUs, I think one per home, which, Charlie, I don't believe is too many gallons per day. Yeah.
Four hundred gallons per day.
So it's pretty minimal. I believe in the past, even for the four proposed homes, there was a, what they call a mailer or exemption, so they don't need to go through the full planning process for it. And I believe they are submitting for that again. So that's kind of an expedited route for these sewage facility planning modules. So I spoke with PBMA and NIRA. They signed off on it. They do not have any issues with it. The treatment facility has capacity. I believe it does eventually make its way to Penn Hills.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the Plum Creek watershed, yeah.
Yeah.
Do those lots go across that little creek and up into the?
I think they, I'd have to pull the plan up, but they do stop short, because they are required to have a sewer lateral easement for that connection, along with each lot's being proposed to have their own individual small stormwater on-lot system to control and then eventually dump into the creek as well, so.
Has that gas well been addressed in the middle of that?
I know it was brought up. I believe that there is documentation that that has been capped.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
But I could definitely follow up for that.
Where's the access road gonna be to get into these houses?
So that's a good question. The access road, they're actually proposing to relocate the gas well. So there might be two different gas wells, now that I say that, Skip, you're referring to. There's a gas well road on the property that.
Up in the back.
Yeah, goes, goes back to.
There's one right in the middle of that property.
Correct. So just to answer one thing at a time, the gas well road is proposed to be relocated kind of in the middle of the three lots, per se. So they are proposing a fifty-foot right-of-way to relocate the gas well road and to potentially add it for any future development, you know, should there ever be this circumstance. You know, they are adding radial curves at the end, meeting all of borough construction standards. Just, you know, who knows what they could potentially do. But the gas well, Skip, that you're referring to, as mentioned, I believe that there is documentation that it has been capped in the past, but I'll certainly follow up and verify that. So we, you do permit houses to be built within a certain distance from a gas well. However, the opposite cannot occur.
Yeah.
So it's gonna, so coming from Salzburg Road.
If you pull out of my driveway.
It's gonna be going towards Salzburg Road, that open field before your house. So there's gonna be an access road there, and then a house that's gonna be up on the hill behind your house?
No.
On, in that field right there.
So if you can, if you can kind of follow along, I'll backscale out a little bit. So this is, this is Autumn Ridge, the phase one, and then phase two and three. So if you're traversing southbound, coming towards Rockland, there's this lot here. And if you can see where, kind of where the field differs from the wooded vegetation here, those parcels will kind of follow that same path. Now, there's a slight portion of wetlands that might also, I think, DJ, you can correct me, might be within the FEMA floodplain, but they're not proposing to build within that area. In fact, that will be a part of the remnant track. So this space here will be cut into essentially three lots. This gas well road will be relocated. Obviously, they have to navigate that through and with the gas company, whether that's Peoples or Penico. I do not recall.
I believe that's Penico.
Penico. And then, Skip, you're referring to another gas well.
It's right in the middle there.
Yeah, some, somewhere down here. It's, it's kind of just looks like a.
Just sticking out of ground by four feet.
Yeah, I believe that's a capped or plugged well.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, that'll be an agenda item.
All right, we moved to the item number six, under Planning and Economic Development, the Moretti subdivision. Sam, this is on Rep Road?
That's correct. I'm gonna pull up the GIS, because that's probably easiest to explain this one. This is just to be accepted as complete, so this allows for some time for our engineer and the applicant's engineer to hash out anything that they may have.
So this is at the bottom part of Rep?
Yes. So closer to Milltown, here's the Turnpike. So if you go under the Turnpike Overpass, there's the golf ball-shaped house, as we would always refer to. Traverse up, and there's a very large wooded track of land that has a pretty big transmission line running through it. And actually, there's a house up here that's not a part of it, but there is really only one house that's fairly close to this. But a property owner owns approximately twenty-seven acres on this track of land, and what they would like to do is carve off this property here at three oh five to sell, and then to remain under ownership of the remaining track. So I believe they're only carving off approximately about an acre, I wanna say.
It says that two point one four five acres?
Two point one four five. So the remaining track will still be pretty large. It's pretty typographically challenging as well, so I don't anticipate this to be some sort of developable, developable lot. So again, this is just a simple subdivision.
Any discussions or questions? Okay, so that's number six. That'll be an agenda item.
Last item, number seven, under Planning and Economic Development, residential demolitions. Sam, last time we saw you in reference to demolitions, I think it was July, we had public hearings.
We did.
For a number of properties. You're looking for permission to advertise for bids now?
We are. We had a little bit of delay with a couple of different legal items, and then one of the homes came back with asbestos, and we had to go seek some quotes as well. Not very much asbestos, but we're pretty happy with the homes that have been selected and that you guys have approved for us to demolish these homes, being seven oh eight Wimbledon Drive, Wimbledon Road, I apologize. Ninety-one seventy-six Walnut Street and four nineteen Plum Avenue. So those three homes are problematic. We often receive a lot of calls from neighbors, so neighbors of that community should be very happy. We are, we are demolishing a fourth house on Tahoe Drive, which is a. It is. It's a trailer. So Public Works has the capacity to demolish that in-house, so that will save a little bit of money from the budget. It's also a very good fall/winter project, but I do need them to do it before the end of the year. So Public Works should be able to do that. The other three houses, depending on how the bid goes, we're most likely looking at that to occur within the first month or two of two thousand twenty-six.
Any questions or comments, discussion? Okay, number seven will be an agenda item also. Thank you, Sam.
Sure.
Don't be a stranger.
So we're gonna jump down to item number eight, and that's simply a request from staff to advertise the start time of the December meeting. Typically, in December, we have the council meeting at five thirty PM. We've been doing this for a number of years. So we're required to advertise that, and we're just asking for council's permission to do so.
Discussion? Okay, that'll be an agenda item.
Item number nine, we're looking forward to two thousand twenty-six. It's the council meeting scheduled for two thousand twenty-six. If you're looking at your OneNote packet, you'll see the proposed dates. We're sticking with the first and second Mondays of the month. There are some oddities, like we see every September or October due to Labor Day and Columbus Day. Some of those meetings being moved, so we're just asking that you approve those items by allowing us to advertise for that prior to the start of the new year.
Any discussion?
Yeah, one thing. Maybe every November, maybe we can move our work session meeting to Wednesday after the election. So that would make it a little easier for the prep for the election.
We can discuss that. Okay, so number nine, any other discussion? Okay, well, that'll be an agenda item.
Item number ten, hiring of an alternate school crossing guard. That's an executive session item. Council did meet an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss that issue. Moving into public safety, number eleven, volunteer fire department vehicle repairs. As we just talked about with Mr. Whitaker when he was here, on a monthly basis, we have a request from the volunteer fire departments for repairs and preventive maintenance to those vehicles. Those are being paid out of the fire fund. So items eleven and twelve are just simply requests to pay bills this month for those repairs.
Okay, any discussion for eleven and twelve? Okay, then both eleven and twelve will be added to the agenda for Monday.
Moving into Parks and Recreation, item number thirteen, Borough Haps calendar for two thousand twenty-six. In your packet, you'll see the proposed two thousand twenty-six schedule. There are some changes to it. We do have three dates planned for concerts at the amphitheater during the summer. We are proposing to scale back the summer movies. The attendance has been poor at best, so we're gonna try one on a different night, maybe on a Friday night instead of Saturday, just trying to see how we can get more people to attend those meetings. Beyond that, we do have the walking and wagging with the dogs that we'd started in two thousand twenty-five. And Jim, do you want to talk about our newest addition in November?
Through much discussion, we have decided to add a event in November, Turkey Try, if you will. Not formally named yet. It's in the beginning stages, but from what I can tell, there's a lot of people into running in Plum. So we look forward to making that a good event next year.
So that'd be like a donation to charity then?
That's been what our discussions have, still working out the details. Nominal fee comes with a T-shirt, and we'll decide on where that money ultimately goes. The date, it's in.
Saturday before Thanksgiving.
November twenty-first, Saturday.
So we're gonna do one this year? Is this for next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Okay.
How far is it? How far is a trot?
Five K?
Anywhere between one and three point one miles. So we're trying to work out the route and things like that.
She can do a walk and a run.
Who?
Well, like me, I'll walk.
Okay.
I don't run anymore since I got my new hip. Yeah. Any other discussion or questions?
Mona was all about making this almost into a second dog walk, and I said, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do two dog walks in one year.
No, I like the idea of doing that. A lot of municipalities do that. We could do that, and we can donate the money to some charity or the local food bank. I think it's great.
So one last comment, real quick comment. We appreciate council considering this in November. We find it as a staff, and I know the Recreation Committee of Council, we want to get the word out to the athletic associations, like we did last year, of these dates that we're having. You know, potentially, we have two conflicts every year. One is with baseball, which we know, we've talked with them, and we're not gonna conflict with their opening day. The only other day is when we have our Fall Fest event, that doesn't conflict with football. So we appreciate you considering this in November, so we can get that out there. And we hope to meet with these, with our athletic organizations, like we did last year. And we hope to meet with these, uh, with our athletic organizations like we did last year, uh, in November or December.
Any other discussion? Okay, that'll be an agenda item.
Uh, so, uh, moving into, oh, my fault, item number fourteen, uh, under Parks and Recreation, uh, we do have a request, uh, from the Plum Borough Basketball Association. Uh, this is a, um, organization that council, earlier this year by motion, had authorized as a community group and now, uh, they are, um, eligible for certain discounts, uh, using the facilities. Um, but Mike Devine had contacted myself, Skip, I know he'd been in touch with you, um, the P B B O is looking to do, as they do, it seems like every year, a tournament on or around the President's Day weekend. Uh, it's a three-day tournament and, um, they are asking, and I think if you're looking at your OneNote packet, there is an email from Mike asking that the council waive the fees, uh, for the event. Um, Skip, I know you and I had talked about, uh, our costs of having, uh, recreation aids there, so council can choose to, um, to, uh, grant the entire one or to, um, make them at least pay for, for the aids.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that cost, we had figured out was around two hundred dollars, uh, but, um, Mike Devine has already, um, saved these dates, reserved them through the system and, uh, he's asking for, like I said, for council to waive the, um, the fees for the use of the facility, um, let it, besides the, uh, the recreation assistant, uh, figures.
Okay, so I, I, I think we should have that as the agenda item, have it in there, that the, they will pay for the, the maintenance fee?
Uh, they'd pay for the, uh.
Whatever it is.
The recreation system to be there, right?
Yeah.
As we do with any, uh.
Right.
Any sort of activity in the gymnasium.
Any other discussion or questions?
Dave, well, after the voting next week, will I then go into the system and make the change?
Yeah, so if, if council approves the waiver, so Mr. Devine, when he reserved this a few weeks ago, actually paid by credit card for this, so yeah, we would refund whatever council approves as part of the waiver.
Any other discussion or comment? Okay, that's my agenda item.
Okay, so, uh, we already did, uh, fifteen and sixteen, so item number seventeen, then, I'm sort of doing this on the go here, so in your, uh, packet, you'll see, um, I had worked with the recycling committee, which is just myself, Mona and, uh, Lorraine Schlegel, on a, um, booklet that sort of explains everything about our solid waste, recycling yard waste, uh, pickup. Uh, it talks about who does it, how they do it, who owns the bins, how you get bins, how you pay your bill, who sends the bill, so it's about twelve or thirteen pages, which is very useful. Um, I'm hoping, I'm not hoping, but before Thanksgiving, um, to set up a meeting with the Road Equipment and Grounds, uh, Committee of Council to go through that. I don't believe there are any amendments needed to the solid waste ordinance, however, there may be something that comes out of that meeting where I do need amendment, so all I'm asking for council to do is to authorize an advertisement of that solid waste amendment, however, we would not do anything until we met with the Roads Equipment and Grounds Group and if something came out of that, it would allow us to get this done in December rather than waiting till January, but I'm excited about the, the booklet, I think, you know, once it's approved and it's out there, we tried to answer all the questions that sort of came up in this first year of the change with, with Keystone and I think it'll go a long way to, um, allowing the public, uh, to see on our website or here in person, uh, exactly how these things work.
Okay, any comments, discussion? Okay, that'll be an agenda item and I believe that that covers everything we needed to discuss tonight to make the agenda for next week. So we need to adjourn. I have a motion by Mr. Schlock, will I have a second? Second by Mr. Majernik, all is in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.